It is not cold. It's hot. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm gonna yell anyway. Welcome everybody to the Keytrive City Council Special Meeting. It is October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is now five thirty P M. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Debbie, could you please call roll?
Richard Pannett.
Here.
Brian Adams.
Here.
Kansas Aldridge.
Here.
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 We have four. If everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Still not working it, so I'm just gonna keep yelling. First item on the agenda is approving tonight's agenda. Council, do you have any questions about this special meeting agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
How long is the executive session?
Um, I'd say we start with twenty minutes and then come back. Potentially ask for one more time. Is that fine?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written with the executive session being twenty minutes for non-elected personnel.
Second?
Motion by Brian, second by Matt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Gary Spivey. Move on to new business. Item A, Keytrive Road and Oliver Gas Line Relocation. Thomas. Welcome in.
Welcome. So I know last Thursday council voted to go ahead and have the city have us and Public Works relocate the gas line. The way it was kind of voted in was that we could to go ahead and do that, but that each purchase would have to be okay by the council that went outside my purchase authority. Currently, there are five items on here that are outside of my purchase power. I really would rather not have to come back for each one and get three quotes for each one of those items if at all possible. That kind of is just gonna put a longer challenge of getting those materials in in-house. These quotes, I've been, some of these, I've been reaching out, looking for some of these objects for three, six months now. So the longer we put a weight on it. I, I did go out and get more than one. A lot of these, for, for instance, the six-inch pipe that we're gonna need to replace is about two thousand and eighty feet. The total is nine dollars and thirty cents per foot. Comes out to nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. I did reach out to D C and B, which is another company that we usually use out of Pratt, and their cost was about twelve dollars and thirty cents a foot. So I reached out to industrial sales out of Olathe, Kansas, and they've been kind enough to kind of reach out to all these other vendors and kind of try to vent and find us the best deals possible. The other, one of the other objects is the twenty light gas meters. I reached out to D C and B, which they, they usually do our repairs and stuff on all of our gas meters. He informed me that he couldn't even get the meters for four to six months. And that's if we're lucky. So then when industrial sales, which doesn't even sell gas meters, reached out for us, they told us they should have, they, they could have some by February or March to replace the ones that we're looking for. The cost was about a hundred and fifty-five dollars a piece for the ones that we're going to change. So, you know, to sit and wait instead of giving the okay for me to go out and look and try to find another meter that could be comparable. I mean, I just don't know at this point. The other, another object is a two-inch gas line. The quote for it, I think we need, we need about six thousand feet of it. It was a dollar thirty-five a foot for eight thousand, one hundred dollars. The other quote I got was a dollar thirty-eight from D C and B. It was about three cents higher. So I was kind of, kind of taken aback when I seen twelve and nine for the six inches and why the other ones were kind of closer. And then we have about six thousand feet for one-inch gas pipe, which is for running the lines to, to the houses. And it's kind of right there on, it's kind of right there on the cost. It's about four to four hundred, which I probably would rather come in anyway. Anytime I spend that kind of money, I wanna kind of make sure that I'm checking. Then we have a valve, six-inch valves. The valves are about eight hundred dollars a piece. We need seven of them, so it puts us about fifty-three hundred. Six hundred and, or seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents is the price of those. The price that I got from D C and B is eight hundred and eighty. So we, through industrial sales, we kind of save some money that way, too. The total price of everything that we quoted out is sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And that's the price that I got from industrial sales to order everything all at once. And that's kind of what I'm up here asking to, to do and get the quote for, to just order everything all at the same time.
So besides the meters, is everything else pretty well in stock? Is there gonna be wait time on anything besides meters?
The, the pipe, depending, the pipe, just the six-inch pipe, we, we finally found some and tracked some down in Tennessee.
Yeah.
The plant in Oklahoma is usually where we get it. They don't have any and currently are not planning on making any for the next six months to a year.
That's what I was worried about was supply.
Yeah, so they also had a plant that burnt down in Texas that produces piping. And so it's a, I don't know, it's a little scarce. I don't understand why the meters, the meters, they, uh, right now, you're not getting any. So unless I have some rebuilt ones, which I have planned on my shelf, I have new Andy's that I've kind of stocked up. But if we, you know, if we had to say how, you know, buy enough for a housing addition that maybe put in next year, I don't know whether I'd have enough meter to be able to get them. Because we're not the only ones, you know, trying to get these meters. We're, we're competing with Kansas Gas Services and the Black Hills and Midwest Energies and, you know, numerous other kind of companies out there. So, and there is other, we, we've used census in the city since we've had gas system. There is other meters out there. There's American Center is starting to make a gas meter. They're not really proven, so I'm not too eager about jumping on that shit yet.
Are those the ones that did the water meters?
Do what?
Are these same company did the water meters?
Yeah, so they, they've come out with a new line of gas meters and they're supposedly smaller. They're about, I don't know, about this size here. You can mount them up, they're ultrasonic and they're, the whole M I U and the meters all in one instead of buying one to put on there. And it's basically a tossaway system. There's, you know, and they're supposedly gonna sell them for about eighty-five bucks a piece, but we'll see.
Didn't we have trouble with their water meters? Is that the one that I'm remembering?
We're having trouble with their reading software, reading our meters, our water meters, yeah.
I knew that there was stuff around that company that-
Their stuff will read their stuff, so as long as you have their water meter, their M I U will read it. That's the holdup there. So it's, it's just a few things there that I wanted to make aware of and, and, you know, and those high-ticketed items are kind of the ones that are, will put the stall on things. So the sooner I can order and get in line, the better.
Thomas, did we have an estimate of the sixty-eight K either from P E C or what you've done previously? I mean, I know there's been a lot, since we put these plans together, there's been a lot of inflation and stuff. Are we doing to what we've budgeted or did we have a single line item budget for this?
No, the, uh, the original budget was, I think when we first started, it was like six hundred thousand. Back in two thousand and sixteen or fifteen, it ballooned to about a hundred and, or one point three million now. And that's basically just cost plus installing the linear feet and, and the equipment and time. You know, because you're always gonna pay that, that cost for the vehicles and employees.
And I know, I know you getting the, you know, being able to do the work yourself is trying to pull that back. But I'm just, how, I'd like to know how we're doing to what we budgeted or what we think it'll come in. Is there any? Did we have that kind of detail in it?
No, so basically what they did when I got the budget for, when I got the bid from N P L is they just took a look at the whole total. The lines, like how many lines, valves, where we're wanting to put the valves at. Basically, you put a valve every time you have an intersection, because you're gonna want to shut it off every time you go underneath the street, underneath the culvert, anywhere that you could have a break that you might need to, you know, shut it off in an emergency. So we just went through and looked through those plans and said, okay, we need a valve here. I need a valve cover. This is where this goes. And then they just shot a bid back of about one, one point three million for everything total. I'm thinking here's a companies like that, they have all the equipment on hand. I mean, they have a yard that has six-inch rolls sitting there. And, you know, they're not willing to give that stuff up, especially right now to anybody. So that's, that's kind of the, the hard part about getting all this put in line and getting it, you know. I would say pre-COVID, this wouldn't be such a big deal.
Inventory's a big issue.
Yeah, and post-COVID, I mean, I still have M I U's that I've sent back at the first of the year that I'm waiting on to get back. So eight, nine months later. Just in water, just looking for water meters. Even looking at different brands, when I was looking at that, someone told me six months to a year. So it's, it's becoming a struggle for sure. And so everything, everything else is basically gonna need that. I can give a printout, you guys can pass this around if there's anything you're gonna need. I quickly did, I kind of ran up against the time. I was actually doing the copper and lead rule that we have to do for E P A in the state and trying to get that done, so.
So, so we're doing this kind of unorthodox in this, in this situation, because in any other case, we'd have a city administrator presenting this. We'd have engineering plans, we'd have three bids for the project, and we'd move forward. I get, I get why it's unorthodox. I'm not against that being, being, that it is being unorthodox. But I don't want to just throw the purchasing policy out, out of a sense of urgency. We're gonna be back in this room in, well, just over a week. And if there needs to be another special meeting to approve something, I'll make myself available. I would hope the other, at least two of the other council people would be available if, if there's something that's that urgent to get ordered out. So as far as I'm concerned, I want to stick with the, the purchasing policy as it's written at this point. And if you can get three bids and we need to come together to approve them all at once, I think we can do this, but I don't, I don't, out of, because this project, I know you want to get going and we want you to get going. But I don't know that it's, it's, that we, we need to throw such an important document and policy out just out of, out of a sense of urgency, but it's just, just might be-
In, in Thomas's defense, so we went to P E C yesterday and we are up against about, correct me if I'm wrong, about a month where our project will not move forward. If we do not get things ordered in, like today, we will not be able to move forward with the project. We will be in the middle of the project and have to stop because we will not get the funding.
From, from WAMPO?
From WAMPO.
Have we talked to WAMPO?
Yes, and we've asked for multiple extensions and we're running up on that, that end again. And so this is unfortunate and the way that it came about is not fun. But I, I understand where Thomas is coming from, because if he doesn't order things now and we don't move forward, we will not have this project.
So what would a motion look like, though?
I have one.
That's what you, you have one.
Because I asked Andrew this question.
Concerned about, because this is not normal.
No.
I have one more question for Thomas. Which item again was the most pressing as far as wait time? Was it the meters?
It's probably the six-inch gas pipe.
Six-inch gas pipe.
The, the highest-ticketed item on there. Like I said, we, we had to make numerous calls to see what people had on their, on their-
That was the nineteen thousand, is that right?
What is your purchasing amount currently? Like what are you authorized to be able to sign without coming to town?
I think it's five grand unless it's an emergency. Which I kind of, kind of think this is an emergency with our talks with P E C yesterday with still having to do some land acquisition for the downtown project and we're kind of behind on that even. There was even talks of pushing the downtown project back because of, because of this. So I don't know what that looks like. I hope it doesn't come to that point. This has been, this has been an ongoing conversation.
We, if we-
So we can't push it back?
If, if we push it back, we are asking, yeah, we're asking for another, a third extension that is never guaranteed. We, and most likely after that, we will probably lose the funding. I, I mean, I can't guarantee anything. I'm just saying, asking for a third extension is not going to look well. And that, I mean, yes, we can ask for it, but it was not recommended by P E C to bank on that.
So what would the motion look like from what Andrew said? And you can't make the motion, can you?
No, but, but I did ask in case. I moved to authorize the Public Works Director to make all equipment and material purchases necessary for the proposed gas utility relocation in connection with the Keytrive and Oliver project in a total amount of up to X amount of dollars.
Okay, all right.
So it would be only before this project and so.
Can we be more specific and, and clarify that document?
Well, I think there was a total cost at the last council meeting.
Why can we?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think there was a total cost at the last council meeting for the process of the material plus the hours for reimbursement plus the fifteen percent contingency in case things have changed between then and there. Usually they build in thirty percent is what engineers do. We just went with fifteen. I don't think it'll come to that. I think the total was like three hundred thousand and some, some change is what was presented at the last council meeting.
But if we identified your, your paper as what we're approving up to those amounts, would that, would that work?
Is that all you need currently or do you need more authority as of this?
I don't know if it has to be petitions as a whole or not, so that was the only thing that was considered.
So the, as, as of this week, that is what you need to be able to move forward initially?
So where, so where everything is?
So if we wait until Andrew comes back next week for the regular meeting and we need to make a new motion to help or whatever, we, would that work for now? Okay.
So explain, explain what you were saying if you ever do.
Well, I was just saying, we use the motion that Andrew approved, but add that sheet of paper, that exhibit that Thomas brought to say, this is what we're authorizing, not just some blanket amount.
Right, right. The, the amount on here, like-
Just to be more clear on what we're authorizing.
So the total.
Not that I don't trust Thomas over, it's not, it's not that.
So if we put the total amount in, I, I don't know if we can amend, like how, how you amend it and to make it right, but I guess we make, we can make a motion and if Andrew comes back and says it's not right, we-
We just add as listed on, in, as exhibit A as a whole.
Yeah.
As presented.
Okay.
Right, can we do that?
I assume yes.
What'd you say?
And just this list as presented.
Right.
With the total not to exceed. But Tom, before we go that direction, Thomas, is, I understand the concern on the six-inch pipe, but are there items in this list that you need right now that we, we? I know, I know the six-inch pipe, but what about the other items?
Like to break ground, is that what you're saying?
Just as soon as I know that those items are coming, that I'm gonna have those items.
Let me, let me ask it a better way. So the six-inch pipe is critical, it's hard to find, you need to get that secured. The one and two-inch pipe is still red, pretty readily available, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so things like that, we don't have to order all of this right now without doing the proper process and the three quotes? So do we have the three?
I would, just because the six-inch ties into the two-inch. And when we do this, we're gonna have to do the whole neighborhood at once.
I'm not, I'm not saying don't order it now.
Right.
I'm just saying, you know, this is a special meeting, we don't, because it's kind of, hey, we gotta get some of this on order. Can we trim this down to say, these are the items we have to have right now and the others we have in the week and a half on?
Well, we have to order right now.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, sorry, order.
Yeah.
I would say the six-inch and the, the gas meters are probably the two most critical on that list.
And, and could we still go through the proper channels of getting the additional quotes?
I would say you can, but I'm not, I don't know if I'm willing to do that with all the stuff that I have going on, to be honest. I've given this quote three months, I gave this, this three months ago to, to another person and it kind of sat on the shelf and it's put us at this point now where we're at. With all the extra work was actually doing the copper and lead and everything, I mean, honestly, I'm not, I'm not too thrilled about doing it now as it is, to be honest with you folks. To be put in this position to where it's either we do this or you guys will get a downtown project is, it kind of freaks me a little bit, to be honest. And this was my way to go around it. So my suggestion is gonna be that if I have to look through each one, that we just let N P L do it for one point three million or we wait until I get the other two quotes back from Duwin and from U S D I. See if their quotes may come in a little lower.
And those are turnkey, everything?
They'll come in and do everything, they'll call on the locates, they'll do all the, we'll do the locating for them, but they'll run all the lines to all the homes, they'll change out the meters. They'll do all the, figure out where all the lines are at currently in the ground, which, so they'll do all the potholeing just to make sure they're not hitting people's electrical lines and stuff.
But at this point, to do that would cost the city a lot more.
Yeah.
They'd be a turnkey service, which is costly and purchasing.
And most likely it would be at the budget at that point.
For the silver budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
But to Brian's point, we need to acknowledge we're taking our risk by not following the proper channels, but the savings is huge.
And I get that, I do. It's the urgency of this that's, that's striking me wrong. I feel, I sense that we're saying that we're gonna lose the money from WAMPO if we don't act now. What is that based on? Has the direct question been asked? WAMPO has been more than cooperative with us every step of the way. If we were able to show a project, do we not think they would push this back a month?
P E C doesn't feel that, that is the case.
P E C is P E C.
I, and I, I hear that, but I also-
Has anybody on the staff at Keytrive reached out to WAMPO and asked that question?
We don't have a city administrator currently.
I understand, I understand.
So we know-
That which is another piece of this.
I, the, the last conversation I had with Jamie was she agreed with P E C and that, I mean, that was what I-
I remember our discussions regarding the extension the first time and it was pretty unusual to have it extended and the COVID, COVID is what really got us our, our extension. Because of COVID, they had a little bit more, I'll use the word grace, to extend the grant. I don't know what reasoning we would get to them for extending it. I mean, COVID's a pretty good-
We can't get the materials.
Yeah.
Materials aren't on order, here's all our P O's.
Well, you see, that's our fault.
Yes. I know, I'm just-
I don't know, I'm just having to be-
No, I, I guess the question is too, do we risk two point four billion dollars to save seventy thousand? I mean, because the whole time this is like, this is the train that left the station. We just gotta do it or we're gonna lose two point four million dollars. Now we're gonna quibble over seventy thousand dollars because-
Or pay more to have it outsourced.
For another half million dollars.
Yeah, for another half million dollars, have it outsourced.
So my thought is we should go ahead with this one time, but not do it ever again on this project because we're gonna be over anyway at some point, I'm guessing. I mean, none of the estimates ever seem to come in where they actually end up, right?
Right.
So I don't see there's any way the city can afford to contract this out. There's no way. It's already way over what we thought it was gonna be to begin with.
No, I'm certainly not advocating that, that we would outsource it instead of doing it in-house. Again, I appreciate Thomas's step forward and, and being willing to do this. But let's not forget, this is, this is, is, uh, budgeted and the sales tax will pay for it one way or the other. Now, we'll pay it off a lot sooner if we have Thomas and his team do it. I totally get that, but, but it's not either or in my, in my view.
Thomas, I would ask this, that, you know, you've presented some of the findings. I know you don't have the formal three-quote process. Do you feel that in the comparison you've done and had enough conversations that this is a, a good price for this package of material? That we're not gonna do substantially better if we go through the formal process?
So I, I have reached, so I did do industrial sales and I also did D C and B. I did get quotes from them, too. I do have those, I just didn't print those out, so I do have two. The prices that are in here are the prices that I took from the lowest bid of the two. Industrial sales was the lowest. They're a bigger corporation. D C B is more of a mom and pop shop that's done it for years, that's always supplied Keytrive. They're used away before I did, so I still reach out just so, you know, I keep that open door of communication in case I do need things. This company is also willing to work and pick up things that they don't normally do. Gas meters, gas crossbars, things like that. There's numerous different crossbar companies out there that make steel crossbars, you know, and who knows what you're getting there. These are the two companies that we usually use in order for, for our McDonald's or our Ford, the, the brands that we normally use out in our system. I would say that it's a fair, a fair bill. It's probably a better price than you're gonna get if N P L charges you per foot for the price, because they're gonna jack up to you fifteen percent on each foot, you know, for each foot. I don't like it either, Brian, I really do not. I don't like sitting in here and asking for these things, especially when I know how hard it's gonna be for us and the guys to do all this in this time period.
And I know one thing you guys know as well is that sometimes you may pay a little more, but you're also paying for availability. And post-COVID, people are just not carrying the inventories that they did prior to that. So you may be paying a little bit more for materials, but you've got the availability which keeps them working and going. I mean, those are things that I know you guys know, but just, I think that that's a big issue for you is not just price, but availability in getting, getting the stuff.
That's, that's the biggest key right now is just availability and, and looking through the emails that I received about, you know, when the timeframe is for the meters or the regulators or when they're gonna be building those or when they're gonna, you know, finally start manufacturing them again. And so those are big keys in why I'm here now and not trying to hop through and call over the United States and-
My car lots are empty.
I mean, I have a ton of other things between building inspections and copper and lead rule is due by October of next year by E P A and, and a water tire that's being painted and sewer lines that need to be re-lined and, and moved. And so to add a gas relocation on top of it's like, wasn't really a top of my priority list, so.
So, so Thomas, in the context of the, the motion that Ashley ran as a sample, what, what's the number you're looking for?
Uh, well, it would be the sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two, sixty-nine.
So we're just approving this list?
Would be this list.
Right, but I think the motion should reference the list.
Yeah.
Sure.
That needs to be-
That should be attached to it.
So I think you could probably read my motion and then say, and see as attached.
Right.
Right, because as soon as you guys approve this, tomorrow morning I will be sending him this list just like this in an email saying, I need you to order all of this.
I can shove my phone over to somebody who ever would like to read this.
So, so here, here's what I'll say, I'll speak for myself. I'm gonna support this against my otherwise better judgment. I appreciate you, you bringing it forward to us, but recognizing that as you said, Matt, regarding availability and essentially the, the, the absence of a second or third quote means we could be paying ten, fifteen, twenty percent more than we otherwise would. That bothers me. But it's still ten, fifteen, twenty percent more wholesale versus retail, buying it from N P L or having that be the project. So there's, there's, I have no doubt that this still saves the city money, but I just, I just don't like the way, the way it's gone down. And that's not your fault. I, I lay that at your feet, that all home. It's, it's just the position we're in, so I will support such a motion.
And Thomas, you, well, you know, we're supporting you in this, we're just doing our due diligence.
Well, I just hope I get it all changed out and you guys can get your downtown project finally, because I've been hearing it for a long time now, so. I'm near, not near here or there, I don't, you know, it don't really matter to me.
Yeah.
And so I'll do what I can.
Thank you for doing your part on it. I know that you always trying to get the best for the city, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, add the amount and see exhibit A. And I can show you the motion when we're done. That will. Yes. Yes. I moved to authorize the Public Works Director to make all equipment and material purchases necessary for the proposed gas utility relocation.
I move to authorize the public works director to make all equipment and material purchases necessary for the proposed gas utility relocations in connection with the Kichai and Oliver project. In a total amount of up to sixty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, see exhibit eight.
The second.
Motion by Kendra, second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries five O, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is executive session for non-elected personnel for twenty minutes, do I hear a motion?
By the mayor, I move we go into executive session, the subject to be discussed during the executive session is non-elected personnel. The justification for closing the meeting is discussion relating to non-elected personnel matters, and the time and place at which the open meeting shall resume is six twenty-one. PM in the city council chamber.
Your second.
Thank you, sir.
Motion by Brian, second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session, carry five O.
Oh, where are we going?
Um, no, we can go.
I would not even gonna walk all the way up here. Alright, I would end in a new motion.
Uh, I make a motion, we extend the executive session another twenty minutes and reconvene at six.
Forty-two.
Forty.
Two.
Forty-two.
Second.
Forty-two.
Yes, six. Alright, motion by Brian, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, carries five votes, we're in executive session still. Carrie's five-o, we're in executive session still. As we return to regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that pursuant to Kansas open meeting statutes, no binding action was taken by city council while in executive session. I would introduce a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five-o, we adjourn.